Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Steve Matthews. It's my honor to moderate this candidate forum for the candidates for the city council. This is for the election on May the 4th, and early voting will start on Monday, April the 22nd, and run through April 30th. The candidates are seated in the three places that are on the ballot this time, in ballot order. So our rules for this are that each of them will have a two-minute opening statement. I have a series of questions that were submitted by members of the community that I'll ask, and I won't ask each question of each candidate, so we'll mix it up a little bit, so that you get more opportunities to hear about different topics. They'll have 30 seconds to respond, so a little tighter than what the school board just experienced, and then one minute for closing statement. We should do this in just right at an hour. And so I'm going to start with the candidates for place one, which is an open seat. The two candidates are seated here, and Mike, I'll start with you, and we'll just go down the table. Each of you will have two minutes for your opening statement.
Well, thank you, Steve, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Thank you for the organizers putting this together. I think it's great that you're here to learn about the candidates. My name's Mike Schaefer. I've lived in Allen for 25 years. My wife and I raise our family here. I would say we watched Allen grow from a boutique town to the vibrant city of over 110,000 people that it is today. For the last 15 years, I've had the opportunity to serve the city in various capacities. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Allen Public Safety Recovery Board. We raise money for our men and women in blue and red in the time of if they get injured in the line of duty, we come in and help support them with some financial help for what workers' comp doesn't cover. I've also had the opportunity to serve on a couple of bond campaigns, one for this facility right here, the new library. We did that in 2016. We approved approximately $17 million for the expansion, which will hopefully start later this year. More recently, I've had the opportunity to serve on the bond campaign for the new police headquarters. I chaired the subcommittee for that, worked very closely with our police chief, our assistant chiefs, looked at a lot of different facilities, learned a great deal about policing in the 21st century, and I can tell you, working with these guys, that these men and women lead with servant hearts. I want to make sure that we keep them provided with the tools, equipment, personnel, and facilities they need to keep Allen a safe city. I think economic development, I've been able to do that for the last 12 years on our EDC board. I've chaired that board for the last six years. If you look at the skylines at Waters Creek, East Sound, a lot of the dirt that's moving on 121, we've had some great partnerships through the last years of my time serving on there. I think all of that's led me up and prepared me. It's been a good on-ramp to take this next step, run for city council. I think I'm the most qualified and best-prepared candidate to help lead Allen through the challenges that we face ahead and invest in the future that we need, because we have a great future for our city. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Scott. I'm running for Allen City Council, place one. I'm a retired 30-year career police sergeant with over 30 years of experience on the front lines of public service. When I was a police officer, I volunteered much of my time on my days off to create, run, and teach our SANE program, which was my department's equivalent to the DARE program. For over 12 years, I taught that program over to thousands of students, how to say no to drugs and gangs, and I raised over $120,000 for the program. As an administrative sergeant, I was a member of our annual budget team, and thus I have a great amount of experience in the area of city budgeting. As a police sergeant, I was tasked with leading my team of officers and making life and death decisions often, and with that, I have great leadership skills. I earned a bachelor's, science degree, in criminal justice management, and I know how city government works. In about 2007, my wife Angie found Allen on the internet, and we decided we were going to move here because of the schools and the excellent diversity. I have a very diverse family. After my retirement, Angie and I and our family fell in love with Allen when we came here just for one week to visit and explore, and we ended up buying a house that same week. Since then, I've been actively involved in our HOA by volunteering to be a liaison with the Allen City Government, including police, fire, traffic, and other engineering and other departments. That's directly resulted in many improvements in my own HOA community. I run for council because I bring to the table my over 30 years of public experience, and I strive to continue my calling to public service by being an ambassador for our community. My priorities are, as we near build out, I want to see our city continue to progress and grow with prudent, responsible spending of our tax dollars, all while not increasing taxes on homeowners. I want to bridge the gap between East and West Allen, providing redevelopment where needed. Also, our downtown business district needs to be redeveloped responsibly to attract businesses and patrons while maintaining its nostalgic charm. I will always support our first responders to keep our city one of the safest in the country. I will not support any more high-density, high-rise apartments that will overload our infrastructure, our schools, our city services, and our first responders. I also want to focus on maintaining our beautiful parks, hike-and-bike trails, and our natural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Good evening. My name is Dave Cornett, and I'm running for reelection for Allen City Council, place number three. Like my sign says, proven leadership, dedicated veteran. Give you a little background myself. I'm 100% disabled veteran from Persian Gulf War. I have been the commander at the VFW in Plano, as well as Allen, as well as the senior vice commander in both, and junior vice commander in both. In the past three years, I have worked on nine different budgets, not only at the City of Allen, but also at NCT 911, where I'm on the Board of Governors, and was recently elected secretary unanimously by my peers, as well as the budgets at the VFW. I am also on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition, and what that does, that just kind of looks at the transportation needs of the area, and we try to get the money in to finish those projects. NCT 911, North Central Texas 911, Board of Governors, that deals with your phone bill and the 911 equipment. They were looking to do a 150% increase because of, once again, state mandates without funding. We were able to get the funding through the state the last session. We still don't know exactly how much, but we were able to stave off that tax increase. And as they're coming to session, we'll ask for the funding again, so we don't have to do a tax increase. Couple other committees I'm on. I'm on Public Art Committee here. I am an ACO advisor through the city. That's just a great program here. Everybody knows about them. I started off on the DIPC committee through the AISD, and then I moved on to Better Black Allen, where I started working on our downtown area. And that's coming a long way, and hopefully soon, we'll be pushing dirt on that, and I'd love to see that through. Promise not to keep the taxes low, support first responders, and redevelop the east side and downtown. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Is my mic on? Is this on? Yeah, there we go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ken Cook, and I'm running for Allen City Council, place three. I just want to thank the Friends of the Allen Public Library for putting on this event, and I also want to thank everyone here in attendance tonight. I've been a resident of Allen since 2012. I met my wonderful wife Carol, who has been a resident of Allen since 1999, and I made Allen my home, and I am so glad that I did. My journey to Texas began 53 years ago. I grew up in a small town outside Boston, Massachusetts, lived there until I was in my early twenties, then moved to California, where I spent several years before finally arriving in Texas in 2010. And as the saying goes, I got to Texas as fast as I could, but in my case, I took 40 years, but I finally made it. I've spent the last 25 years working in healthcare, specifically cardiology, where I was able to treat patients as young as a few hours old to patients approaching 100 years old, working with cardiologists, treating critically ill patients, and oftentimes being called in the middle of the night to help save the life of a patient having a fatal heart attack. My whole professional career has been spent in the service of others, and I'm grateful for it, because working in that environment has given me the compassion and the critical thinking skills that I know that I can bring to city council. I share this with you, so that you all know, as your next city councilman, I will bring the same level of compassion and critical thinking skills that will make me the most effective council member I can be for all of Allen. I love this city. Our wonderful public library, our award-winning parks, and our top-rated schools make Allen a destination for people who want to live in a first-in-class city and graze their families here. I've spent the last several years being involved as much as I can, learning as much as I can about the city of Allen, as a member of Allen's Planning and Zoning Commission, graduate of the Allen Fairview Leadership Class, Class 34, best class ever, and also as a current member of Allen ISD Leadership and Project Kids. I have learned a lot about this city, and what I've learned is that our past leadership was intentional and careful in laying the foundation for the bright future that we now see. My name is Ken Cook, running for Allen City Council, place three, and I would appreciate your vote and your support. Thank you.
Okay. Say it.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah. All right. First of all, thanks for arranging this. Thanks to Friends of Allen, Public Library, Rotary Club of Allen, and Sunrise Rotary Club. My name is Saad Hamid, and I am a father of three, and I have three generations who live in Allen, and my wives have four generations who live in Allen. So we call Allen home, because all of us love it, as all of you do. With all that, I feel that, and there is a responsibility, as all of us take this responsibility to serve the community, that's the responsibility I wanted to take and offer my service. I'm an IT guy. I have 15 years plus of technology experience. I come as a telecommunications engineer, a master's in business administration, and much more on the professional part. But I want to set an example for my kids and my family, where we serve the community. That's why I'm here for. With this responsibility to serve, I have been actively involved in the city, like COP program for the police department, which I have worked with, and my family and my kids work volunteer, like Kids Against Hunger program, Keep Allen Beautiful, and all different great programs we have. The purpose, again, is to serve the community. That's why I'm here for. Now, coming to what I think we can do together for the betterment of the city, I have certain priorities, which I think all of us have a good understanding about, like public safety and fostering economic development and growth, and addressing aging infrastructure, which we all want to see. And last but not the least, all of us love Allen because of its characteristics, which how it looks like. We want to invest on improving parks and rec centers. I am here for Allen City Council, place number three, looking for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Dave?
Good evening. My name is Dave Schaefer, and I am the incumbent for Allen City Council, place five. I am a licensed private investigator, a Texas Board Certified Investigator, and hold nationally recognized designation of Board Certified Criminal Defense Investigator. In addition to city council, I serve on the board for the Texas Association of Licensed Investigators, where I serve as the Sergeant-at-Arms for the board, liaison to the Ethics Committee, the Commendations Committee, and the TBCI Committee. For the last three years, I have had the privilege of serving the citizens of the greatest city in America, Allen. We have made excellent strides over the last three years, the same as our predecessors did on the council previously. In year one, we achieved a no-new-revenue rate. Year two, barely over the no-new-revenue rate. In year three, we took a different path, and we instituted the city's first-ever general homestead exemption at the city level, all while avoiding any risk to the city of Allen's infrastructure and providing police and fire the utmost level of support. It is my intention, should I be privileged enough to serve another three years, to continue that trajectory, to see that the east side is revitalized, to see through the construction of our new PDHQ, and continue what I love, which is serving, again, the citizens of the greatest city in America. My name is Dave Schaefer. Again, I am the incumbent for Allen City Council, place number five, and I hope to have your vote on May 4th. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, thank you to the Friends of Allen, and also the Rotary Club, all the organizers and volunteers. Really appreciate everybody doing this and putting this forum together. My name is Ishan Nashe. I go by Zi. Me, my wife, and our four kids, we live in Allen. We've been here about 10 years. Before that, we were in Richardson for about 10 years, and this is our home. It's a beautiful city that we all love, and we like to provide back to the community, do the community service, and volunteering pretty much across the board, across different programs, like Keep Allen Beautiful, the Fourth of July Celebration, so on and so forth. I'll tell you a little bit about my kids. My eldest, Maryam, she's actually an Allen Eagle. She graduated from here. She is in Austin College now. She's also a Girl Scout Ambassador, so that took a long time for us to achieve, for her to achieve that. She was also the chair at the Allen City Council for youth representation for Keep Allen Beautiful, and she's carrying on on that journey and providing community service. So that's what me and my wife do. We teach our children how to provide, how to do community service, how to give back, right? And that's essential for us in any program that we do. Pretty much that's what I teach all my scouts as well, as I'm a scout master for an Allen Troop 1110. And I'm an IT manager. I run very complex and last-year programs, from 10 million to 100 million, always deliver at cost and on time. And I'm looking forward to serving the city and continue to contribute and make our city even more beautiful than what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Hi. My name is Carl Klemensich, and I am running for Allen City Council, place number five. And first of all, I wanted to thank the Friends of the Allen Public Library, the Rotary Club of Allen, and the Sunrise Rotary Club as well for sponsoring this event, and for everyone who's in attendance today. A little bit about who I am. I am a husband, a father, a grandfather, and I'm a servant leader to our community. My wife Lori and I have been married for almost 40 years. We have been blessed with five children, nine grandchildren, and we've lived in Allen since 1994. We attend St. Jude's Catholic Church, where we are active members, by day and sometimes at night. I am an accountant, professional, for the last 40 years. I hold multiple degrees in both finance and accounting, and I'm a certified public accountant in the state of Texas. In terms of what I do in my free time, I've volunteered a lot. So I've been active in our community, in our school district, and for city organizations for the past 28 years. Up until last year, when I had to step down for a year, I served on city council for six years. And I also served before that, five years as school board trustee for Allen ISD. I served 10 years on Allen Economic Development, four years on parks and rec, and four years on community development. So I believe in giving back to the community. During the one year that I sat out, I've been attending a lot of the city council meetings, and I was concerned with the lack of tenure and experience of the current council, and that's why I decided to run again. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all. This first question is for the candidates in place one. Dave, I'm going to start with you, and then go to Mike. Talk a little bit about your vision for Allen and what steps you would like to see to help Allen have a unique identity, and you have 30 seconds to respond.
Okay. What I'd like to see is a responsible build-out with minimal impact or no impact on homeowners' taxes. I'd like to see downtown business district get developed in a nice way that maintains a lot of its nostalgic charm, as I mentioned earlier. I think that's a great place for our city to really focus on making this more unique than we already are, with some outdoor attraction area, and just really doing something to keep a very nostalgic charm there.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, so our last horizon, 121. We have a great opportunity to do some really unique and special things there. I think that's already begun with the farm. I think we need to be responsible about how we finish building that out, especially the largest undeveloped tract of land, which is at 12175, that the buildings group recently have purchased and working through the city. I do agree that the downtown revitalization is important. I think we've made a lot of progress over the last two years. We've reached a lot of steering committees. We've got a lot of feedback from the citizens on what they look for and what they expect to happen there. So I think those are great opportunities for us.
Good. Thank you. This question's for the candidates in place three. Ken, I'm going to start with you, then Saad, then Dave. And Ken, if you would, bring your mic down just a little lower, maybe it won't pop so bad. The question is this: All cities go through cycles of growth, decline, hopefully renewal. And so for a city like Allen, that has done a lot of growing over the past couple of decades, what proposals would you specifically endorse to ensure Allen remains vibrant and attractive?
Well, I think a very important part of development for the city as we grow is to keep our green spaces. We need a good public square, so to speak, so when we develop our downtown, I would very much like to see a common area for the citizens to come. You know, community is everything in Allen, and as we grow towards eventual build-out, I would like to see us really preserve those green areas for public events and cultural events.
Okay. Thank you. Saad?
Saad. Okay. All right. Yeah, I think all of us love Allen because of a reason. We like the Allen, Allen the way it is. So while we grow and we build all this revitalized downtown and we build this 121 corridor, I think we need to keep in mind that we keep the Allen the way it is and try to make things grow and improve the way we will keep it loving. So I think with having the business come in and having to increase the tax base, we have to make sure that we keep it balanced. Thank you.
Well, I think important part will be to revitalize the east side. I know that's been started, as well as the downtown area. Talking about the green spaces, that's been included. Very much on our mind while we were going through that process, and in the citizens' mind. We extensively invited the citizens to come in and give us their input, how they wanted us to see it, and then we had a company come together and just put it all together, and the green spaces are there. Like I said, the east side definitely needs a little bit of a hand, and we're looking at that now.
Okay. Thank you. This question's for the candidates in place five, and Zi, I'm going to start with you, and then Carl, and then finish with Dave. Do you think the city is spending enough on maintaining infrastructure, specifically streets, alleys, and sidewalks? If not, what proposals would you support to address this issue, and how would you balance that with the cost of other city priorities, such as parks or first responders?
Yeah, I think that's a very good question. So first of all, I think the city is spending quite some, I think, $5 million-plus on roads and streets. We have to look at both on the east side and west side, to make sure we are handling both sides to the degree that they need to be covered. We definitely need more to spend, and for that, I think we need to focus on increasing the revenue, then increasing the tax burden. There's a lot we can do in both our organic and inorganic growth within the city. We have tremendous opportunities that can be set and unleashed within Allen that I'll be looking into.
All right. Thank you.
Great. As Allen continues to mature, almost 62% of our neighborhoods are over 25 years. Recently, the city council approved a study for infrastructure management service, where they actually did a study of all 480 miles of city streets in Allen. It was determined at that point in time that our streets were B+ and that we would need to invest the $5.3 million, which is going to come from the bond that was recently passed, so that we'll be able to maintain our streets going forward. Thank you.
Okay. So a portion of that $5.3 million is going to be covered by the bond that was recently passed, but every year, there is a certain portion from the general fund that covers. And we are working diligently to spend an adequate amount of money for infrastructure. The one thing I would like to point out is, there is a finite number of vendors that have the qualifications, the insurance, and the staff to perform the work needed. And there does come a point where, no matter how much money you spend, there's not enough people to get the job done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Candidates in place one, Mike, we'll start with you, and then Dave. The legislature recently took action to reduce residential property taxes to help mitigate the impact of rising property values on residents. But are there actions you believe the city should take?
It's a regional issue. We live in one of the fastest-growing counties in the country, and so it does relate to Allen. I think Allen has been very proactive. We have the second-lowest property tax rate in the 33 cities in Collin County. In addition to that, we've recently passed a 5% general homestead exemption. And so I think we've been very proactive in trying to address this. The challenge, I think, that we have is, while we do that and while we focus on that, we stop funding some of the other things that are important. We push hiring public personnel, public safety personnel down the road. We push hiring stuff, investing in our parks and other places that keep Allen the best-in-class city. So that's the challenge.
Well, like Mike said already, we are the second-lowest in the entire county as far as property taxes are concerned. That's already a pretty good mark for us. I believe that responsible continued building and bringing in new businesses that have good tax base will help offset property taxes even further, because we'll have more money for the general fund to finance other public things that we need in the city, such as first responders, hiring more police officers, firefighters, as our brand-new fire station is almost completed as well.
Okay. Thank you. Candidates in place three, Saad, I'm going to start with you, and then Dave, and then Ken. Are there activities or programs offered by the city that you don't think should be offered by the city, and if not, who should provide those services?
In my opinion, we have a very fine balance. We have the right programs, which we offer in the city, and I think with the growing population and the growth of business and the residents as well, this is an ever-changing dynamic, and we have to just keep thinking about what are the best programs with these growth coming into the city, and add those programs as we find them appropriate. At this point of time, I feel like we are appropriately having those programs. Thanks.
Okay. I would say no as well. Nobody's really complaining. I don't think we're overspending. We're not overtaxing. So my answer is short and simple, no.
Okay. And Ken?
I do believe that Allen has a good balance in how they have the programs in the city. I don't see any reason to really change anything and maybe enhance some of the existing programs to benefit more citizens. That's the way I see it.
Okay. Thank you. In place five, Carl, this one will go to you first, and then Dave, and Zi will finish with you. How do we, as a community, strike the right balance between single-family and multifamily to ensure both healthy property values and affordability?
Well, that's a complex question, right? I think what we need to do is offer enough of housing solutions, be it single-family residents, townhomes, multi-, basically tenants, apartments that exist currently, urban living centers, so that we provide a variety of housing options, so that people that live and work in the city can afford to live here.
I would say that that balance has more than been struck already. As we approach build-out, which we are already approximately 85% to 90%, we have thousands of apartments, including over 4,000, that have yet to be built. As I said before, three years ago, I would vote for no new apartment developments, and I intend to vote for no new apartment developments. Thank you.
I think the key for us is to listen to the citizens, try to understand what they're looking for. As I'm talking to the citizens of Allen, people are asking me about affordable living, because people who are working in our restaurants and hospitals require that, right? So we have to continue to take a look at that and see, you know, if there's need, because the city's growing, right? As the city's growing, we have these houses that are being built out, which is great, but then we have a lot of population that requires multifamily housing as well. So we have to take a look at that and continue to evaluate.
Okay. Thank you. This question's going to go to all of you, and if I may, Saad, I'm going to start with you, and go down to Carl, and then come to Mike, and finish with Ken, if you'll follow that. The Texas Legislature will meet next spring, and you'll be asked to weigh in on policy matters that affect the city of Allen. Is there any specific action you'd like the legislature to take on behalf of cities, or any specific proposal you'd oppose?
In my opinion, we need to make sure that cities should have some level of independence on some decision-making, and we need to make sure that we bring this up and to have that control on the cities, what they can do and what legislators should consider that should be given as a lever for cities to decide on. Yeah, that's what I feel like we should keep on focusing.
Okay. Thank you. Dave?
Can you repeat the question again?
Happy to. The Texas Legislature will meet next spring, and you'll be asked to weigh in on policy matters that affect the city of Allen. Is there any specific action you'd like the legislature to take?
you'd like the legislature to take on behalf of cities, or any specific proposal you would oppose?
Specific proposals at this time, no. What I would like them to do is stop taking away local control. Thank you.
Okay. Zee, you're next.
I think definitely I would say that. I think 2127 is a concerning legislation that came through. So we definitely need to talk about that. At the same time, we are a city within Texas, so we follow the Texas laws. At the same time, we have to continue to dialogue, you know, together with other sister cities, and bring up issues and concerns. The lawsuit that they have allowed to be, to go against the cities, that's very concerning to me. Thank you.
Carl?
Yeah, I think the issue is always about local control. Let the city governments kind of rule their destination, if you will. The other thing that's very important is making sure we have good coordination with our mobility plans, with TechDOT, and with funding over major interstates, which is going to be even more valuable as the county and North Texas continues to grow.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I think anytime the state comes in and starts trying to make ordinances and adopt things that affect cities, they're usually targeting the larger cities like Dallas, and San Antonio, and Austin. And what happens is, you have unintended consequences on the smaller cities like us. For example, if you look a couple of years ago, they passed something that basically annihilated all the building codes in Allen. So if you wanted to come in and build a metal building, no problem. We couldn't have stopped you. Fortunately, no one found out about that, and they came back a couple of years later and corrected that problem. But that's the challenge. They don't always think through everything they pass.
Well, I'm going to have to concur with everybody else here on that same topic. As far as I'm concerned, we need to remain independent from all those kinds of decisions. We don't need the state to step in and take away any control from us when it comes down to building or anything else.
Yeah, I think that's going to be unanimous, because we gave you control of the building material. And that's just insane. State rep emailed me and said, is there anything that concerns you? I told them, yeah, leave this city control alone. Never got back with me and passed more, or tried to pass more bills to take away city control. So yes, definitely agree with that.
Well, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but Austin is Austin, and Allen is Allen. And I would like to see Allen take care of its own business. If I was going to want the state to do anything, it would be to maybe offer some programs and assistance for the growing homelessness issue that's starting to happen in Collin County. We see a little bit of it in Allen. And I think that that's one way, the only way I would like to see state to get involved locally.
Okay. This question is for the candidates in place one. Dave, you'll start, and then Mike. About current tax revenues. So do you feel like the city's current tax revenues are too high, too low, just about right? Where do you think we're at as a community?
I think it's just about right. I'm sure there's room for improvement, as always, in any aspect of taxes. I think if we continue to be, like I said, responsible in the businesses that we continue to bring into the city, stay the city we are, where we can attract good businesses. I think a lot of businesses want to come here, and I think if we can continue to bring them here, we'll get that tax base that we need, and we should stay just fine.
Okay.
Yeah, Allen's tax was at its peak in 1993. When I moved here in 1999, it was about 57 and a half cents. Now we're at 42, I believe. We've lowered the property taxes for 31 years in a row, so it's nothing new. It's not something we started three years ago. We'll continue to do that. The challenge that we have is that while we do that, we still have to invest in the city in the future. We can't stop investing in a best-in-class city. And so I think that we should continue to lower property taxes, but not try to hit an arbitrary number like NNR, which is totally unsustainable for most cities.
Okay. Next question, candidates in place three. Dave, you'll start, and then Ken, and Saad will finish with you. Share with the audience your top three priorities or goals for the city during your term, something you haven't talked about already.
For the term coming up?
Yes, sir.
Keep taxes low, of course. And I agree, you know, NNR is not achievable every year. It's not. It's something that's going to be decided year by year. I was proud to work on the homestead exemptions, and some on councilmen wanted to take a little bit of time before we expand those, and I'm fine with that. Always support our first responders, especially after last year. How can you not? And I would like to enhance the quality of life with our award-winning parks and trails. Three years in, I realize the value of those, and I want to support those.
Okay. Thank you.
My three big ones are, obviously, the downtown development and the development along 121. That will enhance our tax base and keep our tax rate low. I'd also like to see continued, let me try to, just, I'd like to see the commercial development, keep our tax base low. And I would like to also see our parks continue to be enhanced. And I would like to find achievable housing for the citizens in Allen, so we can attract young families, so they can plant roots here and raise their families.
Thank you. Saad?
Sure. My priorities start, my first priority starts with public safety. And I think there is a lot of room. We are already good at this, but we, there is a lot of room to improve that by having technology incorporation in the public safety. There are a lot of technologies which can help us. Then we have the aging infrastructure, which is my top priority as well, especially on the east side. And the last but not the least is economic growth. So we already have the plans, 121 corridor, business development. And I need to emphasize on the third one, to have revitalizing the east side strip malls and all. Yeah, these are the three priorities I have in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This question's for place five. Dave, we'll start with you, and then Zee, and finish with Carl. Share with the audience your, how your professional background prepares you to be a member of the city council, and any particular leadership experience that you believe lends itself to success in the role.
So as I actually mentioned this earlier this morning at another event, I've been in the legal and criminal justice field for well over a decade. I approach everything as an investigator. And whenever you're investigating anything, details matter. That has prepared me to look into the details of everything that comes across my screen, or my desk, or however you want to phrase it. And it is that background that makes me qualified.
That's a very good question. I think the key for me is, as I run very large-scale programs, is how I set up the teams. The team building, getting collaborative programs going, getting people excited about doing the job that you have to do, right? So that's essentially what I do. That's how I drive success for large-scale programs at work. I also bring a lot of cybersecurity experience. This is essential for our security. So we have physical, then we have digital that we have to watch out for as well. So I bring that to the table. Thank you.
Fantastic. And I mentioned earlier, I'm a CPA. I'm all about fiscal responsibility. I'm all about managing budgets and looking at everything from a financial perspective. As far as being prepared for this position, 28 years of community service. I made sure that I learned about the city, the city operations, or public safety, before I ever ran for public office. And 28 years later, it's, I value everything that I've ever had an opportunity to do, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city of Allen that I love.
Okay. Thank you all. So at this time, it's time for closing statements. And I'm going to go in reverse order that we did when we started, which means, Carl, you'll start, and we'll finish down here with Mike. You each have a minute for closing.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone who sponsors this event, who's in attendance today. I can truly tell you that it has been a blessing to live in the city of Allen, and to be able to participate and give back to the citizens. This is something that I have a huge passion for. I love this community, and I've worked hard, along with fellow council members over the years, to make this the best city that's possible. And I always like to say that I love Allen, and I'll do anything to make sure it's a great place, continues to be a great place to live, work, play, dine, shop, and raise a family. Carl Clementicich, Allen City Council, place number five, and I appreciate your vote.
Yeah, I think the key for me is, first of all, thank you so much for, you know, setting this up, and all of you being here. And what I'm going to bring to the table is essentially transparency, feedback loop, getting, listening to the residents themselves to see how we are doing. Optimization is essential, right? So what we are doing and how we can optimize it without changing the effect to the residents, that's critical, right? So I'm going to keep an eye on that. That's what I focus on at work. Also, making volunteering exciting again. So that's another big goal for me, to make sure we do that. Youth leadership is very important. I'm very passionate about that. To make sure we are collaborating with the plan, they do that right, and we do that for our environment. So once again, thank you so much for everybody. My name is Zishan Nasik. I'm voting for me, Allen City Council, place five.
Yeah, so I'm going to echo the thank you for everybody that took the time out of your night to come here. Surely, you all had better things to do than to listen to a bunch of glorified politicians run their mouths and make promises. Allen is a very special place, and the crown jewel of our city is our people. You will not find anyone else in any other city as special as the people of Allen. I am the incumbent. I believe I've done a good job, and I would like to continue the hard work that I have dedicated myself to for the last three years. My name is Dave Schaefer. I am the incumbent for Allen City Council, place five, and I would greatly appreciate the privilege of serving for an additional three years. Thank you.
I would, again, thank you all for coming. Definitely, it is a pleasure to be here. And I would, again, repeat the same thing, that it, Allen is special for all of us. It's special for me equally even more, because I have, as I said, I have four generations calling Allen home. So I have the perspective of grand-grandparents, grandparents, my kids, myself. So I bring in that thing for community, where I can collaborate, I can provide the feedback, I can bring in and have a better communication. With all my IT experience and my technology background, and the dedication to serve the community, I feel that I am the right candidate for Allen City Council. I'm ready, and I want to strive for making Allen our city, which we love, safer, stronger for our generations to come. Look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank everybody again. Thank the friends of the Allen Public Library. I love this city. You're going to hear that from everybody up here. I'm going to take the love that I have for the city and be the leader that the city needs for Allen City Council, place three. My name is Ken Cook. I'm running for Allen City Council, place three, and I would love your vote and support. Thank you very much.
I'll echo too. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for putting up with us. Thank you for hosting. My name is Dave Cornet. I am running for reelection, Allen City Council, place number three. Now, a couple of things I didn't really talk on a whole lot tonight was downtown, the 121, and the east side, because things are moving on that. Things are going forward. And that's why I wanted to stick to what my vision for the next three years are. I've worked on the downtown for nearly five years now, and I really want to see that through. I have been that leader that Allen needs on Allen City Council, place number three. Proven leadership, dedicated veteran. Because of our team, I'm part of the team that, our streets, we no longer have to guess how much money we need to put into those streets. We know that we put the money into the streets. We're at B-plus now. We'll be at an A in just a few short years. And the streets will continue to get better. No more guessing. We know exactly what we need to do now. DaveForAllen.com. Thank you.
And once again, thank you all for being here and for having us. And thank you, Steve, for moderating this forum for us. I love this city, and I want to do everything possible to keep Allen an attractive and a beautiful city for all of us to live and work in. I want us to continue to be a best-in-class city, which will continue to attract more businesses and visitors, which will bring additional tax base, which can help lessen the tax burden on our citizens. We need to be fiscally responsible. We need to give our other crown jewel, yes, our people are awesome. I think our other crown jewel is our event center. It's been sadly overlooked for many years, and it needs the attention it deserves. It's bleeding money, and it has a lot of potential to bring in a lot of income for us and offset some more tax base. I'll never approve art. I look forward to being involved in the continuing formation of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. I'll listen to the people, and I'll be your ambassador. I'm a man of integrity, transparency, and as such, my word is good. I will keep my promises to our community, and I will follow through with all of my commitments to you. I'm Dave Scott. I would appreciate your vote on May 4th. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for everyone who's here tonight, and for the organizers. I think Allen is an exceptional city. And I think we need to invest in its future to keep it that way. I think that Allen citizens deserve to be a best-in-class city, to be the standard bearer, to have the best roads, the best infrastructure, best access to healthcare, access to the best education, award-winning parks, right? Best public safety. These are things that all cities strive for, and that's what we do in Allen. We're standing on the shoulders of men who've been here before us, and we have a responsibility to carry that torch forward. If you look around this room, what you see is a collective of a diverse group of people with different ideas and different backgrounds. But we're drawn here tonight for what? For our city, because we want to be proud of the city that we live in. We want to love our city. And we want our leaders and our representatives to be proud and to brag on them, to be more optimistic than ominous. That's the kind of leader that I want to be for Allen. My name's Mike Schaefer. I'm running for place one. I ask for your vote, and thank you for your support.
All right. Let's give these candidates a round of applause. And I want to give a special thanks to Kathy and Regina for being our timekeepers tonight. Thank you both very much. We want to thank the friends of the Allen Public Library and the Rotary Clubs of Allen for hosting this event tonight. As a reminder, Election Day is May 4th. Early voting starts Monday, April the 22nd. It'll be 8 to 5 the first week, and then 7 to 7 on Tuesday the 29th, Monday the 29th, and Tuesday the 30th. You can vote at the municipal court, Parks and Rec Building, next to City Hall, at Allen ISD Municipal Service Center, or any early voting location around the county. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you all.